Good evening, everybody. We're going to get this meeting started. Welcome to tonight's historic meeting of the Escondido City Council. Please rise for a moment of reflection and remain standing for the flag salute and National Anthem.
Please join me in a moment of reflection. We come together tonight to say thank you. Thank you for the privilege, the blessing, the honor it is to serve here in the city of Escondido. We come together tonight as diverse community. A community with backgrounds, different beliefs, different presence, and different futures, yet one common goal, that is the betterment of this city. We come together tonight to seek guidance, wisdom, and discernment during deliberations that transpire this evening. And in doing so, we lift up Mayor White, Deputy Mayor Garcia, Councilmember Martinez, Councilmember Garcia, Councilmember Morosco, Councilmember-elect Fitzgerald, and City Treasurer Schultz. We ask that you give them peace and wisdom as leaders into a bright and prosperous future. Amen. Councilmember Morosco.
Please join me in pledging allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, Maya Jaimez may come forward.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly dreaming? And the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
At this time, we'll call forward the Classical Academy High School Choir. Everyone may be seated. Yeah. Next, we have Olive Cronis, who's going to be performing a poetry reading.
Hello, my name is Olive Cronis, and I'm talking about--
One moment, Olive, I'm so sorry. It's muted. Let me get you a handheld mic. One second.
Hello, my name is Olive Cronis, and I am currently a 12-year-old at Rincon Middle School. I am honored here to present my poem titled "A Bird of Knowledge." My mind is like a bird in a cage, longing to be free, where wisdom and knowledge are the only key. Each time I learn something new, I spread my wings. Sageness is richer than gold from kings. Once I master a skill I can teach, others can behold that ability that is sweet like a peach. Then my mind can take off with wings of anew, up, up, and up into the sky so blue. But my brain is stronger when it's with others. Together, it's better with our sisters and our brothers. And my gaining of knowledge is never done. It shines light upon everything, just like the sun. I know I have lots more to learn and do. I also know I have help from my very own crew. Thank you.
I had a feeling that was going to happen. Mr. Mayor, council members, city clerk, and our community. My message today is one of unity. I think we all agree, we need unity. Thinking back four years ago during the pandemic, following comes to mind. And I think I need to put on my glasses, and I might see better. I'm paraphrasing the famous words of Charles Dickens. It was the worst of times, it was the best of times. It was the worst of times due to the restrictions imposed on us and the general misery caused by the pandemic. It was the best of times because it confirmed that when working together, we can overcome even the severest adversity. The city of Escondido placed approximately 100 concrete K-rails along Grand Avenue to help businesses move some of their activities outside. While the initiative was excellent, the dual or the dull barriers created a sad scene. A few artists started decorating these K-rails. People from all walks of life stopped by and praised the initiative and the artworks. The ideas spread, and soon neighboring cities were following Escondido's lead. The project was titled "The Coloring Book of Hope." You will remember that in 2021, the city of Escondido received the Helen Putnam Award of Excellence. And this was because the city worked together with everyone, and everyone together with the city. The painting presented here depicts Escondido unity. It is a tribute to all who support the success and prosperity of our city. And there are many of you in this room. I'm pointing at everyone. The artwork is also a reminder that if we listen to each other, if we cooperate, if we bridge diverse opinions, if we accept compromise, and if we do things for the right reasons, we can achieve exceptional results. It takes each of us to make a difference for all of us. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, now we will shift gears to the topics to cover this meeting, which will include the certification of the election results, the outgoing officials, Councilmember Morosco, oath of office for our newly elected officials, subcommittee appointments, and deputy mayor appointment.
Awesome, thank you. Before we move on, I do want to thank the Escondido Police and Fire Color Guard, Maya Jaimez, the Classical Academy High School Choir, Olive Cronis, and Suzanne Nicholson for their participation in the meeting tonight. I wish we could start every meeting like this. It's a totally different feeling, and I love it, so thank you all. Tonight, we do not have a report out of closed session. Move on to non-agenda public comments. Do we have any this evening?
None off of the agenda.
Okay, then we'll move on to the consent calendar. Items 1 through 15 are on consent, unless anybody has anything they'd like to pull.
I will move to approve the consent calendar. I will be voting on number five, and then I will, yeah, so just FYI. And that's recording the previous vote.
Perfect, thank you. Before we do that, my agenda says items 1 through 15.
Oh, 1 through 5.
But my agenda only goes to item 11.
Correct.
Okay.
1 through 5.
1 through 5, got it. Okay, so move to approve items 1 through 5, and yeah, we'll do a roll call vote, if you don't mind.
Oh, okay, sure. Councilmember Morosco, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mayor White, how do you vote?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Garcia, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez, how do you vote?
Yes, with the exception of number 5, no, thank you.
Motion approved.
Thank you. That brings us to our current business. Number 6 is the certification of the November 2024 general municipal election results.
Honorable Mayor, city council members of the public, the election was held on November 5, 2024, and the election results were as follows. In the office of City Treasurer, Douglas W. Schultz was elected. In the office of City Council District 3, Christian Garcia was elected. In the office of Council District 4, Judy Fitzgerald was elected. And Measure I, the Escondido Community Investment Measure, passed. Therefore, staff's recommendation is to adopt Resolution Number 2024-189, certifying the November 5, 2024, City of Escondido general municipal results. Adopt Ordinance Number 2024-08, establishing local one cent general sales and use tax for 20 years to be administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, including provisions for citizens oversight and accountability. Adopt Resolution Number 2024-190, authorizing examination of sales and transaction and use tax records. Adopt Resolution Number 2024-191, authorizing the mayor to execute agreements with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration for implementation of a local transaction and use tax, and approve all other documents required by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration for implementation of the transaction and use sales tax. Any questions?
No questions for me. I would just like to congratulate Judy Fitzgerald, Doug Schultz, Christian Garcia, and the community members behind Measure I. Thank you for all your hard work, and gladly welcome the new council member aboard. And that's all. Anybody else have anything? Go ahead. I'll second it.
Would you like to do a roll call vote, Mr. Mayor?
Not on this one, no.
Not on this one? Okay, perfect.
Any comments? Comments? Okay, let's vote.
Voting is open.
Mine's broken.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Moving on to item 7, presentation of plaque and comments from Councilmember Morosco. And I would invite Mike to meet me down at the podium, and any of our family that would like to join us up front, you're welcome to do so. I know I asked, but it was more of a demand. Yes. Before I present this proclamation, I, geez Louise, wanted to say just a few words. I think most of the time, most people only get to know their representative for the 45 minutes to, in the case of the other night, four and a half hours, that we have a city council meeting. And you don't get to see the countless hours spent in the community, meeting with constituents. You don't get to see the countless hours at home going through emails. And I think I have a unique perspective, knowing Mike as a friend, having him as my own elected representative at one point, and then being welcomed into the family, and now as a colleague. And I've never met anybody as dedicated to their personal life, their family life, their professional life. And I just wanted to say thank you very much for your service to this community. I think it's profoundly recognized with anybody that you've come in contact with over the last 14 years. 14 years. So thank you for your service, thank you for your dedication. And with that being said, whereas Michael Keith Morosco was appointed to the city council, the Escondido City Council on December 8, 2010, and successfully re-elected to city council in 2012, 2016, 2020. And whereas Councilmember Morosco supported public safety, invested in infrastructure, enhanced economic growth, and promoted parks and recreation during his tenure on the city council. And whereas Councilmember Morosco has dedicated his life to serving others through his work as a physical therapist, as a trustee on the Escondido Union High School District-- and I'm going to break away from the proclamation. Not many people know this, but I think he's one of the only politicians to ever vote himself off of an elected position by choosing to separate from the districts. And as a volunteer with numerous organizations. And whereas Councilmember Morosco has lived in Escondido since 1967 and has been married to his wonderful wife Pam since February 17, 1979, and has been blessed with four children and seven grandchildren. And whereas Councilmember Morosco has played a vital role in the success of Escondido and has set the community on a course for further prosperity moving forward. Now therefore, I Dana M. White, Mayor of the city of Escondido, do hereby proclaim December 11, 2024, as Mike Morosco Day, and invite you all in joining. Olive, before you go, the city clerk and I would like to present you with a gift, a parting gift.
Holy moly. Is that legal?
And you have to, you don't have to report it now.
I believe it's a watch. Thank you so much.
It's engraved with his name and the years of service for the Escondido City Council.
Thank you so much. Very, where's that?
Amen.
Thank you all, very, very much. He knows I love watches, but that's beside the point. Now I don't really need, I don't care what the time is anymore, Brian. And I not only get to retire from the city council tonight, I get to retire from work on the 21st of this month. So our heads are spinning, there's so much going on. Thank you all for being here this evening. Thank you for coming to listen to me share just a couple of comments. You all have heard me say something similar as of late, and I think Councilmember Garcia can relate, but we used to look like-- Joe and I used to look like Christian when we first started all this stuff. It's true. That's what, 14 years on the city council and total 25 years in Escondido as an elected official. And it has been absolutely a fantastic ride, one that we have enjoyed tremendously from start to finish. I can't even express adequately the blessings that we've received, the people we've got to know. I've had the good fortune of working with four city managers, two city attorneys, three city clerks, myriad of department heads and assistant city managers and deputy city managers, and countless amazing individuals throughout our community. Not just Escondido, but through San Diego County. The different individuals who we've had the opportunity to engage with on boards and commissions. The list just goes on and on and on. And it has truly been a blessing and a godsend. I've had the opportunity to serve with three mayors, with 11 city council members total, and with two treasurers. And that too has been a tremendous blessing. Colleagues who I've grown to know and to love, and who have been very tolerant of me. I can be a bit pig-headed at times, and I appreciate their patience with me and the community's patience. I'm sure there are some out there who are rejoicing with this day. Don't have to listen to, don't have to listen to Morosco anymore. But you have to be careful what you wish for, because now you have Judy. And I'll be in the back clapping a lot, so. Again, thank you all so very much for being here and for affording me this opportunity to serve our community for as long as I have been able to do it. And it's, again, time to get rid of the old and to ring in the new. And that's what we're doing. So excited for Doug's victory again, for Christian's victory, and for Judy's victory, and for everyone in the community who worked so hard to bring to fruition Measure I, and for the health and betterment and the well-being of the city of Escondido. Thank you all. Oh, I almost forgot. I wasn't going to name names, but I do have to name some names, okay? We have up here daughter-in-law Ariel Morosco, Mila Morosco, Avi Morosco, Gia Morosco, Kelsey White, Sunny Jan White, Hattie Pearl White, our son Jared, and my wife Pam. And John Whitworth, who's in the back, who has stood by me and has encouraged me, has prayed with me, has helped me, guided me, and provided the best counsel anyone could have hoped for for these past 25 years of public service and 47 years of marriage. Thank you all.
Before we do a quick family photo, I would like to introduce Adrienne Cisneros from Jim Desmond's office, who also has a proclamation.
Congratulations for job well done. I have a commendation letter from Supervisor Jim Desmond. It says, "It's with great pleasure that I extend my sincere appreciation to Escondido Councilmember Mike Morosco for his outstanding leadership, commitment to the citizens of San Diego County, and thank you for being a successful, passionate community participant, ensuring neighborhood safety, promoting fiscal responsibility, and economic growth. Blessings and best wishes on your future endeavors. San Diego Supervisor Jim Desmond." Congratulations.
I'm gonna hold you to your three minutes.
You know, about 20 some years ago, we had all the audio replacements center, and it cost us $400,000, and we've had problems ever since. And so I made a comment one time at a council meeting, maybe we should have paid $500,000. Anyway, I'm here tonight because the second Saturday, Wednesday of every two years is just a phenomenal day in this country. I watch democracy in action to see council people appointed or elected. My purpose here is to congratulate Christian Garcia, Judy Fitzgerald, and Doug Schultz for coming on board again. Christian, you no longer are the appointed councilman as duly elected. But what I came here to say was to thank Mike Morosco and congratulate Mike Morosco on his 14 years of service on the council. I worked with Mike for like eight years prior to, and I didn't realize how many years you were on this high school board, but 25 years of local civic service, darn it, that's, that's a commitment to this city, and I appreciate that a lot. And I hearken back to December 8th, 2010. We swore in a new mayor and re-elect, and swore in a, a former councilman. And the first job that our council had to do was to figure out how we're gonna replace the vacant seat. So Mayor Abbott looks in the back of the council chambers and says, "I nominate Mike Morosco to be on the council." I seconded the motion, we took a 4-0 vote, and then Sam looks at Mike and says, "You wanna get sworn in now?" Mike shrugs his shoulders, says, "Okay." And so he and Pam walked up here, got sworn in, and took a seat, and within less than 15 minutes, we saved the City of Escondido untold amounts of staff time, resources, and the cost, potential cost of reelection. But what I, you know, I'm almost out of time, but I remember an incident out in the parking lot after a council meeting one night, and that showed me a lot about Mike Morosco. He had every, he had 100% to pop this guy in the head, but Mike kept us cool and would not stoop to his level. And I've always remembered that, Mike. And at this point, I would like to wish the best to Mike and Pam Morosco in all of their future endeavors. Thank you very much.
There, I apologize, there was one thing I, I wanted to say today. I had, I was, I received a call from David Ross, from The Times Advocate, for a parting interview, the last of many over all these years since 1990, when I first was elected. And he asked me all the usual questions, and at the end, he says, "Is there anything that you regret?" And this, I didn't have an answer at that time, but it, it came to me soon thereafter. There's one thing that I do regret, and this has nothing to do with Sam, or Ed, or Marie, or Olga, or anyone that's up here now, or Mayor McNamara, but my regret was not having more time to serve with John Mass in the city council. Sorry. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike, thank you, Ed. We'll move on to number eight, oath of office and comments from newly elected official.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, perfect.
Perfect, that sounds great. So I'll take it from here, gonna call forward Doug Schultz to take the oath of office, and family is welcome as well. Doug, you can stand at the podium.
Yeah.
Yeah, please, please. Oh, no problem. There you go, yeah. There you go, sir. All right, Doug, congratulations on your election victory. Just raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Aye.
Doug Schultz.
Doug Schultz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which.
Upon which.
I'm about to enter.
I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, official now.
I don't have too many comments. Especially being the treasurer, I'm excited that this is my third term, I get to do what I love in terms of being in wealth management, managing investments and finance. I'm also excited too, with Measure I passing, that the city will be on a much better track to thrive in going forward. So, looking forward to serving another four years. Thank you.
For those of you who don't know, Doug had a grueling race.
All right, look right here. One, two, three. One, two, three. Let's go. One, two, three. Congratulations. Next, I'd call forward Deputy Mayor Garcia and family. Congratulations, Deputy Mayor. I know you wanna take the oath on a bible, so you can say it here wherever you want. Perfect. So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Christian Garcia.
Christian Garcia.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which.
Upon which.
I'm about to enter.
I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, official now.
All right. Thank you for being here, and Suzanne, thank you for your words earlier, 'cause it echoes a lot of what I'll be about, what I'm about to say. Love your neighbor, love Escondido. These are the words spoken throughout the course of the past year. The message derived from the book of Matthew is a reminder to the community. This commandment is one of two that inspired the prophets and the one that our modern laws should emanate from, because no good rule or law has ever been created out of hatred or division. And it's a difficult truth for us to wrestle with and to accept, because we know that some men will burn their neighbors for a moment of light. Instead, he's excited, instead we must reflect on and harness this moment, the moment that is one we learn from our challenges of the past and we accelerate into the opportunities of the future. I spoke with a good friend recently, who was ruminating on where the city stands. She filled me with optimism when she mentioned the challenges, the many challenges we have overcome, and mentioned the new opportunities which we are now afforded, many wonderful opportunities. And today we stand at the precipice overlooking a bright and beautiful future. I think you all know it, you all feel it. And whether through serendipitous events or through divine providence, our community, this community has manifested to create a collective of beautiful and inspiring minds. And this collective draws from souls from distinct walks of life that add to the mosaic of our city, that will create a masterpiece once our duties here are fulfilled, much like my colleague, Mr. Morosco. Because, and as mentioned, each piece has an integral and distinguished role that must be fulfilled for the paint, for the picture to be fulfilled. And whether my role here is a keystone in the arches leading into the tunnel of the future, or a simple pedestrian stone laid at the cemented grounds carved by masterful masons, I'm humbled and inspired to simply be laid at the edifice of which we are creating. But my position here could not have been possible without the support of my wife and my child, my family, my team, the community, and the profound inspiration of God. So with that said, I humbly accept my role as your councilman for the beautiful city of Escondido, and as always, thank you to my community for the privilege of serving you.
I'd like to call forward Judy Fitzgerald.
Thank you, girl.
Congratulations, Judy.
Thank you. I know we're supposed to call our family up.
Yes, please.
And before we begin, I know in my bio, many of you know that I am one of 10, and many of my siblings made it here today, as did my nephews and a couple of sister-in-laws. So, could I have them join me up here?
Most definitely, come on up.
All right, sisters.
Yeah, yeah, by all means, wherever you are.
And it's okay if we don't have enough flowers. I understand. This is a surprise. Thank you.
If you would do me a favor, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Judy Fitzgerald.
Judy Fitzgerald.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which.
Upon which.
I'm about to enter.
I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, official now.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for being here, so many familiar faces and so many new faces that I met throughout campaigning. Again, I'm Judy Fitzgerald, and the three things I ran on were faith, family, and community. Faith in my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, who I know is the one that opened these doors for me. My family, which is here with me today, and of course, the backbone of every person in leadership, and my community. My community, which, and many of you have become family because of how close we have worked together. So, community with being neighbors, friends, meeting people through the schools that my daughters went through, organizations, businesses, Chamber of Commerce, and arts. And I've just met so many incredible people that also, as I do, you too have a heart for this city. And that's why I am so excited to be able to represent District Four, but also make decisions because of how you want the city to look like, and the future and the hope that we all share for what's coming next. I know that I have a lot of great mentors to thank, a lot of people that have really come alongside me and have just really supported me and given me wise counsel. And as I've shared with many, I may not have the answers to everything, but I do know the people that do. And I'm counting on you, and I have your phone numbers, and I also am keeping Mike Morosco's number on, on dial, and if I can't get ahold of him, I do have Pam's number, so he's not getting far. And again, the, the community challenges that we face, we are all in this together. And I know that we're gonna be working through some things, good things, some things we may not agree on, but we do agree on one thing, in that the future of this city is looking better because of the decisions made that have me here today, as far as what I'm able to help with, with Measure I passing and, and some other decisions that, that are being made within the city. So I do want to give a special thanks to some people, not just from this community, but for our neighboring cities. Again, our cities don't have borders, commerce does not have borders, and I do wanna really just point out that Chairman Cope, Stephen Cope, from the San Pascual Tribe of Kumeya Indians, he has just been so supportive, and not just for his city, but also investing in what you care for in this city, as people from San Marcos, Rancho Bernardo, and up into in the Rainbow and Valley Center area. And with those connections that you all have, and all the efforts that you're going to be sharing and gifting, because this is your community, I, my hope is that I represent you well, and that we're gonna be able to see the results of all your hard work and the decisions you made, and the trust that you've given me, and then also the trust that I have on every single person that is sitting here as a councilman member and the mayor as I- member and the mayor, as I have worked with them in the past, closely with them. And I hope to serve you well. And I thank you for this, this opportunity and privilege. Thank you.
Hey Judy, where'd you go? Before we move on with the motion and the vote, I would like to welcome Councilwoman Judy Fitzgerald. It's a pleasure having you serve us and the city of Escondido. And I wish you the best of luck. With that being said, I would move to approve Resolution Numbers 2024-189, 2024-190, 2024-191, and Ordinance Number 2024-08.
Oh, and Mr. Mayor, we already took a vote on that item.
We did?
Yeah, perfect. So now we're onto inter-agency.
Oh, my bad.
So sorry, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I'm on the whole wrong agenda item. Okay, number nine, review and update of City Council inter-agency and subcommittee assignments. Is my go? Okay. There's not much to say. Most of the assignments stayed the same, pretty much replaced Mike with Judy in most cases, but does anybody have any comments or questions? Okay, then I move to approve the subcommittee and inter-agency assignments as assigned. Thank you. Please open the vote.
Voting is open. Motion approved, five zero.
Moving on to item 10, excuse me. Is the appointment of the deputy mayor. And I will just go ahead and move to appoint Councilmember Martinez as the deputy mayor for 2025 to 2026. Unless you oppose. Okay. Does anybody have any comments?
Prior, prior to the vote.
Sorry, public comments.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Greg Oliver and Dolores McQuiston, would you select speaker?
Yes, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. My name's Greg Oliver. I wanted to thank Mayor White for lifting my veil of disappointment from the last year and nominating Consuelo Martinez to the office of deputy mayor. And I wanted to thank the entire city council for approving, or any of us that have worked, anybody in my community that's worked with Consuelo knows she is a, perhaps a font of wisdom, or maybe enthusiastic player. But she is a leader and I'm sure she'll be terrific in this job. And again, I want to thank you very much and thank her for accepting the position. I know Escondido will be better off. And any of you that approved the sales tax for the first time this year, better late than never, thank you very much.
Dolores McQuiston.
Good evening, my name is Dolores McQuiston. I reside in Escondido. And I want to congratulate Consuelo on her appointment as deputy mayor. Thank you.
No further public comment.
We'll go ahead and vote on this one too.
Voting is open. Motion approved, five zero.
Okay, that takes us to our future agenda. Does anybody have any items they'd like to put on a future agenda? If not, we'll move on. Do any of my colleagues have a subcommittee report or other report that they'd like to share? Go ahead.
Quick, but congratulations Judy, Christian, and Doug. And just, just, I, really quick, I went to December night's great event, mural unveiling of Humvee Mur, Jubilee at the Tamales Jovita Maple Street Plaza. Go check it out. And I look forward to Saturday's Christmas parade. And yes, and congratulations again.
Go ahead.
I also will congratulate my colleagues Judy and Christian and Doug. Measure I, everything, it was great. And I have plenty to report on subcommittees, but I'll leave it for our next meeting.
Alright, you, go ahead.
Thank you everybody for being here. Congratulations to my colleagues and Mike, love you brother, you're going to be missed.
Real quick, since I have a full house, I will say, Councilmember Garcia and I had a fantastic meeting with the artist Paco Pablo. I would encourage everybody, if you're not already actively engaged in the local arts community, there's so many wonderful things going on, so please do that. This Saturday is the Christmas parade, Be There or Be Square. And there's also the, I forget what they're calling it, but the holiday party with Multicultural USA in Grape Day Park that runs virtually all day long. So, please join us Saturday at some point. Move on, city manager?
Taking all my reports.
Do you have any other public comments?
Yes, we have three speakers on non-agenda. First would be Nate Harrelson. Nate Harrenstern, sorry, my apologies. Oh, I didn't see there was a second Nate. Thank you, yeah, I appreciate that.
So, Mayor White, honorable councilmembers, I appreciate the time to speak with you today. And, and I appreciate the ability to come and celebrate with you, a look into the future, a commitment to what Escondido can be and what Escondido will be. I greatly appreciate, looking forward to that. And the reason why I'm here is because I work with a group of individuals who may not know what that future looks like for them this time next year. That they may not have the jobs that they have currently. They may not have the training paths that move them forward. And I really need you to understand that not only is this important for the individuals I speak of, but it's important for the community of Escondido. We have, as I have said in the past, been leaders in putting theater and technical workers in leadership positions all across San Diego County. In the Globe, in the Playhouse, the Balboa, the Civic. We have individuals who have gone through the program at Escondido who are leaders and running shows as we speak at the convention center right now. And I want to make sure that this council understands that there needs to be a commitment moving forward to the training programs that exist in the CCAE. And that no matter what happens with the RFP moving forward, we need to make sure that we have the ability to train the leaders that come through here. And I'm here again, and I'm going to be here again and again and again until I can have a commitment from this board that we will have the leadership that we need being trained through this facility. This, this has, the leadership from the CCAE has changed the arts community in San Diego County, it has changed our community in Escondido. And I want to push and continue to move that forward. I have apprentices who are going to be signed up, who may not have a place to be placed next year because of this RFP. I have, we have interns who may not know where they need to go. I need the council to meet with the individuals who will help us make sure that this moves forward. To make the deals necessary so that, that by this time next year, the workers that I'm speaking of, the interns that I'm speaking of, the apprentices that I'm speaking of, will be sure in their future and in their career. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paul Lindenfeld.
Hi, my name is Paul Lindenfeld, and first and foremost, congratulations to everyone here. And I'm here to talk about the request for proposals for the California Center for the Arts Escondido. I started working at CCAE two years ago as a stage technician intern. And I have since graduated the internship and now work as a stagehand throughout San Diego County. The RFP concerns me. First, because it makes no guarantee about continuing the valuable work the center does for the community. And second, because it includes no worker protections. During my time at the CCAE, I saw men, women, and children of all ages and cultures coming together for our wonderful free outdoor events. I saw local children getting the opportunity to perform on stage for their friends and family. I also saw how wonderful the people who work at the Center for the Arts are. The center is a place where young stage technicians like myself are able to grow, able to make mistakes, and able to be proud of the work that they do. I'm scared that with the change in management, my friends will lose their jobs. And I'm scared that the city of Escondido will lose something precious. I am incredibly proud that my fellow union workers are here today, showing their support for the CCAE. I love to work at the California Center for the Arts Escondido. Everyone who works at the center loves what they do. The workers of IOTC 122 love to serve the community of Escondido. And all we want is to continue doing what we love. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Nate Woods.
Hello again, esteemed city council members, and congratulations Judy Fitzgerald on your newly inducted position. I hope that you specifically take my words to heart and understand which ones were meant for previous iterations of this council. Last time I spoke before this council, I talked about my own experiences and growth at the Center for the Arts. And after witnessing continued neglect on the part of this council for protecting those people that have made this venue great, I feel I have to come before you again. Last I spoke, I told a humorous story about the first time I was on that stage, the wow that I felt being on that, being there in a real theater. And how I got laughed offstage for forgetting my lines. I, that's not really what stood out to me. The memory that stands out to me is that wow, is that realization that I wasn't on the L.R. Green Auditorium stage anymore, that I was in a real theater. And what has kept me going for the past nearly 10 years that I have served that venue is seeing it on the faces of children, of teenagers, of adults, all walks of life, all ages. I have watched that spark light a fire in people. And that is the true venue of, the true value of this venue and of these people. I've even gotten the rare opportunity to watch my own niece experience that same thing. To grow and thrive as an artist, and even though she's only 10 years old, she's much better at remembering her lines than I was. The way I see it, this council has a decision to make that I haven't seen real representation from any of you. Are you going to be the city council that stood by your community through difficult times, through people that have dedicated their lives and their careers to this city? Or are you going to gamble all of that away just to fix a budget? That is all, thank you.
Goodness gracious. Before I adjourn this meeting, I would like to invite everybody to the rotunda for a reception with complimentary food and live music. And with that being said, this meeting's adjourned.